I don't know that we're recording, good.
All right. Don't think of letting me know if I'm dropping down. Okay.
I know.
So we have just called the meeting recorder and on the play allegiance while all of all. Councilmember.
Here.
President Bush.
Here.
Councilmember was absolutely councilmember of the greeting.
Yes.
Councilmember records.
Yeah.
Councilmember Winston.
Here.
Mayor Deutsch.
And I'm here by zoom. I didn't hear my name.
Sorry, and councilmember corner. She's noted that she's here. All right. Consideration of agenda additions or changes. For the number of changes, I think that the agenda as published is correct. Does anybody believe there are any changes to be made to the agenda? Uh, had she, or you realize they think it's going to be? Okay. Uh, I have no comments to make other than to note that it is working here. We are returning on this unit. So uh, we'll make it a little noise here. Uh, so make sure to speak up when I have councilmembers in the public comments. Uh, I made a report.
Sure. Uh, I want to welcome everybody. I want to remind everybody, uh, if schools are back in session, that means kids are being picked up and dropped off at school bus stops. Uh, so I ask everybody mind their pieces of views while driving, keep to the speed limit 125. Um, and make sure to stop at bus stops when a child is being picked up and dropped off. Uh, you know, it's not worth the extra point four seconds you will get to get wherever you're going to endanger our, our kids. Um, our police will be out enforcing. They have set up enforcement. If you get caught passing a school bus while, while it has its lights on and stuff, uh, sign out. It is a very hefty fine. It is pointing at license and it is just more trouble than anything. Um, please, please abide by, by the, the way you would want your child to be treated at that bus stop. So I thank everybody for the cooperation and that's it.
All right. Thank you. And Bush. All right. Right next, uh, on the agenda is public comment. Um, I'm going to remind everyone that public comment is three minutes. We'll ask you to stand up, but you can state your name and your address. Actually, it's the consultant. Um, I'm going to just start uh, in the front row here. So which way to go over there?
Yeah, I'm John Law. I'm here in support of our neighbors down on 100 block of Marion Avenue.
Your address?
I'm sorry, 214 Marion Avenue. Uh, who have a, uh, electric charging station that is still in front of their property. Uh, then I think they're going to talk about a little bit their, without their consent, I guess, to uphold it. Anyway, so I'm just here to support. Thank you.
Hi.
Mike, all right, one on two South Essex at, I'm here in support of the same thing. There's one in front of our house as well.
I'm sorry, your name, well, sir?
Mike.
Uh, my name is Kevin McLaughlin, 125 Woodside Avenue. I'm also supporting, um, really a complaint against this very heavy handed installation of these charging stations now proceeded and whether it's even broken.
Sir, could you, do you mind repeating your names?
Sure, Kevin McLaughlin.
Thank you. I just remind us to pick up a bit.
Yes.
The device that we're here is broken. Uh, go to the second round.
Thank you. My name is Michael Yanoff, Golden Law Firm, personal attorney, and I represent a number of the people in this room and other people here in the last person here to see me. And I also represent the people who's the house directly affected by the installation of the EV charging station. I'd just like to swipe my second. I know I only have three minutes to speak very briefly anyway, but I believe that's fine. This is not about the appropriateness of EV charging stations. Never has been, never will. What it is, is about the appropriateness of placements like EV charging stations in areas that are really not conducive to allowing the stations to be placed there. Uh, specifically the one I'm talking about now, and the others that have the same problem. The one on Marion Avenue, Marion is, as you all know, is a 30 hour street with parking on both sides. And the placement of this particular EV charging station, and I'm only talking about this one at this moment, has resulted in the taking away of two parking spaces immediately in front of my clients, one of my clients homes, which eliminates the ability to park with whoever. But again, this is not about the appropriateness of the EV charging station. This is more about the standards that should be utilized with respect to the placement of this. And I refer specifically to emails that were obtained as a result of a right to know. And, and I just read to you, um, just one major point that I might, I might. And, uh, this is President Bush. This is an email from you dated March 21, 2023. And it's addressed to, uh, a number of different individuals, including those who are in this room. It's, uh, the flurry, it files a flurry of emails that are charging, installing the charger in 317 Marion. It fits our criteria. And then it lists a series of criteria. Across the street from the parking complex, lots of houses without drivers on the block, no serious parking issues. Electrician has confirmed it's feasible and the homeowners are supportive. Those are issues which are critical and also were actually written again in an email. Again, from Christine Calvert, and this is regarding, um, it's not, it's not from Christine Calvert. This is from, can't tell who this is from actually. But it says that the installation of, of the, of the charging station uh, looks to fulfill at least one of these three criteria. A joint in municipal building, commercial property or apartment. The owner of the property adjoining the location is supportive of the installation or the property adjoining the location has a driveway. These are issues that need to be addressed. And I understand that there seems to be some indication of miscommunication. But what, what the people in Norbert Borough that I represent are looking for is participation to see whether or not the placement of EV charging stations cannot be more conducive to commercial properties or industrial properties or municipal properties, or properties such as those, but not immediately in front of residential properties where the impact is direct. And you can imagine also, and again, I know I'm running out of time. I'm running out of time. I hear you and I apologize. But specifically with respect to the Marion placement that we're here today in front of Mr. McLeod's house. There's absolutely no place, there are no place for somebody who just comes up and drives to the, to the charging station to, to stay. They're, they're, they're at the sidewalk. They're at, they're, they're wandering around the area while their car is charging. It's really not a safe environment for that kind of issues. There's no room in this.
Time is up, sir.
Thank you. I just want one moment, if I may, I know my time is up. But I think it's, I think it's important for Borough Council to understand that addressing this issue with the residents will eliminate a lot of future problems.
Sir, your name once again?
Michael Yanoff, Y A N O F.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Uh, name's Kevin Tang, 127 Marion Avenue. Um, just again, thank everyone here for coming to support us. Um, support the issue. It is a complicated issue. We appreciate your time and the willingness to discuss it with us. Um, and we love you for that. They're even discussing to be had. Um, communication is key. It is local government. We're all neighbors and we want to approach where it's back.
My name is Amy Smith, 127 Marion. That's the part we choose, Southern Marion Avenue. I'm just back here, um, just supporting Kevin and Amy. Hopefully they can make the right choice to meet each other.
My name is Christine McGuire. I live at 105 Chestnut and I also am in support of Kevin and Amy and, um, other neighbors in Norbert, whether directly you or other, um, other homes here in Norbert who have, uh, drove up from work one day by an EV charger station, um, placed in front of their home. Uh, whether you're on the north side of this outline, the process just doesn't seem to fit the culture of our borough.
Ma'am, what was your name again?
Christine McGuire.
Thank you.
Chris Calver, 161 Marion Avenue. I agree with Christine McGuire to come home and all of a sudden see EV charger in front of your house with no information, no notification, no nothing. It, to me, it's just the opposite of what we're looking for in our group. And I think there are a lot of other options. So I support Kevin naming you totally 100%.
Well, sir, Roy Eisen, 150 Marion. I'm here to, uh, discuss the procedures for the installation of the EV charger. Do we agree our appropriate, uh, processes to be, uh, by some areas? Thank you.
Mike Staub, 222 Sabine Avenue. Um, I'm just here to support the.
There was a scam launch which reports Sabine. I'd also like to support the, the Marion Avenue because these EV charging stations really need to be in commercial areas. It's really not appropriate to happen in residential areas. I think the most powerful point that Mr. Yanoff said is when someone comes to park their car, what are they going to do? If we want to help support our businesses, we need to have these charging stations in the center of town. If someone's going to come and go at the end of Marion Avenue and look for their charger, what are they going to do? To send it to a restaurant. These EV charging stations should absolutely be in the center of town in the commercial district. But I'd also like to address, uh, these, the master park plans and the, uh, the Sabine development. I'd like to ask, are you still in, in working with Montgomery County Development Authority? Are they still, are there any development plans that are in the works that are on the books? Have developers reached out to you? Have we reached out to developers? It's a question that we just don't get the communication. Uh, and with the master parks plan, I was listening in on the meeting and there's, they're saying they're going to be having meetings, but as they're progressing, the meeting, there's no meeting scheduled for the public. And the public really needs to know what the development plans are for our park. That's really important. And in the master park plan, have you addressed the final usage of the Sabine property? Has that gone to court yet? Has that been resolved? Is that property going to be in the master park plan, the park side, the school side, the entire side? That's really important that again, it's communication. What is happening with that park? Um, and a question also is, as, as Mr. Walk would have mentioned a few months ago, part of that park was paved, uh, when a former borough manager was there and, you know, allowed that park to be that part of the park to be paved. Will that be taken back to the park? That's when, um, Seagull was there. Part of that park was paved at the request of Seagull and there was no proceedings in just that near weekend because it lets me know that part is, which is paved. So we really just want communications. What is the plan for the park? What are the plans? There are the public meetings and when, you know, it's, it's very frustrating for residents to come here to public comment, say things and have you all sit there and go, okay. Former council presidents had, meet the council, come to a round table, talk with us. We want to talk with you. And we just don't feel that communication. And that would be really helpful for us to have a round table discussion and to discuss what is going on and what our concerns are and how you want to respond to our concerns.
I will briefly respond. Uh, there is no news on Sabine Parker. I've been known to have been actions taken by anyone on that. Uh, the master parks planning group is just getting started. They are sorting themselves out administratively and I'm sure that down the way they will have more publicly. If I were to reach out to the, the people on that committee, we'd like to learn more about their.
Now, will we?
Their meetings are public. Yeah, well, all, all of their meetings will be public.
Right, but will we be able to, you know, talk with them and have conversation? And then there's other, there have been other master plans.
Thank you.
Well, are they going to be used also, the previous master park?
The scope of work has not been determined and finalized as of yet. We do not know. We do know that there will be review of previous planning efforts and some level of incorporation. We don't know that.
So you have the undermaster brought back from the, uh,
Like, this is about the time I discussed that. I'd like to ask the chair of the master park plan, instead of, or members to tell you. I don't have that. We're just getting started. We move on to a couple of times. Sorry. But like I said, early days for a bunch. Bruce Hartman.
You can speak up, sir.
Bruce Hartman, the control of Marion Avenue. Dr. Dukes, supporting Amy and Kevin, our new neighbors. And I tell them, they are very blindsided and not treated, treated, treated with neighbors in Marion Avenue.
Um, hi, my name is Ariane Benesgaya. I am the resident of, uh, in Canyon, um, getting into purchasing power. And I'm here to support them. I also, in the same way as the neighbors. Thanks.
I'm Claire McCarry, C L A R I E, M C, at the C A R R I E, 109, we're in that. I'm here to support Kevin and Amy. Today I came to see Senator Haplovis, um, representative, who was wonderful, got what I needed done. I parked in the parking lot, the municipal parking lot next to the police car that was charging. Absolutely perfect. That is where the chargers should be. In places that you can get to, I can, if I have an electric car, I would go to that charger, charge up, woke up, walk the streets, you know, go coffee here, do all that. Not in front of my house, not in front of Kevin and Amy. It was almost in front of my house, but fortunately my pole was too old. Well, I'm eight years old and I'm too old to have to worry that Norbert does not consider us. I lived in here, as I told you, I assigned since 1963. Long Marion Avenue since 1970. Had a fire rebuilt in 2000 and the borough was so kind, so wonderful, so helpful to not only me, but to the neighbors. You know what? You guys aren't doing it right now. I don't know why. I never volunteered to be on the council. I have too big a mouth. And another thing, Michelle, she wasn't here last time. She's not here now. I know what she's going through in life. She should show up because she's the upper half of the poll. Thank you. Oh, and she also has an electric car and a charger in her garage.
Hi, my name is Terry Harvey, 207 Marion Avenue. And I'm here to support all the neighbors, the same initiative. Uh, this is McCary, said perfectly. I've also been here since 1966. And it seems like things are not really being handled maybe as they have in the past, right? More communication is needed. We all know that we actually went through this and we decided to move the EV charger. What happened here is against EV chargers. But the way that you guys are doing it seems, it seems to me a little bit stinky, just to me. So I wish we could open our line of communication. Thank you.
Mr. President, is appropriate just to ask a question?
Uh, it's, uh,
They don't like the answer.
Sorry.
Well, I'm not even looking for an answer at this particular.
No, I'm sorry. If you'd like to email us, I mean, we're just.
Wait, I could have answered the question already. That's.
Our, our rules of counsel on public comment, don't care we allow for questioning, particularly over the starting agreements. You know?
Just think for a moment, so if the council is interested in making progress in this or whether you would leave the neighbors to the rest. That's the only question that, that I have intended to ask.
Right, can I make a motion that?
I'm sorry, that sounded like a, I don't think it intended.
It's not credible. I'm not under any circumstances.
I don't think it was.
Can I make a motion that means that agenda items be consented and then that I just.
Close public comment.
And close public comments.
Well, we haven't seen there's anybody online. We're just making a public comment, so it's not, we can't go through this chain.
Another thing.
Is, is there anybody online which isn't speaking? No response. And I apologize, Michelle, if I even make this meeting as you said, she has a person. She's, the charger, which is in front of her house, was put in at her request. I just wish to remind everybody of that. It is not to her financial benefit. She has her own charging station. But when we initially, uh, talked about these charges, one challenge that was thrown out to us was, well, if you think this is such a good idea, why don't you put it in front of your house? And Michelle stepped up and said, okay.
Yeah, it's her neighbors.
And I can put this in front of my house. So I agree that, uh, there should have been better notification about this project, just as any others. And we've been talking with the borough manager. We have a speed bump going in I O and we have various, uh, stormwater bombouts are going to be going up in front of people's, you know, and streets to deal with our stormwater problems. These projects, you know, people should be aware when a project is going in front of their house as a courtesy. Uh, and so that they understand the project. So I think we're all very clear on that. And going forward, we will be working to address that. I, I understand your concerns. Uh, we have received, uh, a number of letters on this, both from many of you and from some of your neighbors who are in favor of the charging stations. They tell us that they are interested in acquiring electric cars, or they have just acquired an electric car and they are very happy that they will be able to charge on their own street. This project is a pilot that is intended to allow our Norbert neighbors that who live on streets where they do not necessarily have driveways and do not have a place where they can put their own charging station to own an electric car. That is who we expect to use these and that is, as far as we can tell, who has been using these in the locations that we have already set up. Um, it is part of the strategy. It does include residential, does include, um, you know, municipal chargers and commercial chargers. But this is an approach to see whether these residential chargers will also be being used and be useful in, in moving along our winter transition.
I'd like to take a record of how it's used.
Okay, I apologize. This public comment is over. If you would like to contact us, you know, by email, we do read emails. Uh,
That's a surprise. But sure, I'd like to move out of the president's that we post public comment and we. Eight percent is on the first. Thank you.
Public comment is down low. Thank you for coming, Alice. We do hear you. We understand you, you know, you're, you're unhappy. It's, it's very.
I know.
Yeah, we got the Senate there.
I'm just the Borough Council, proof of agenda items, danger date.
Again, all right, uh, are you discussing with the Senate there? All right, we are voting on the Senate, not on the state here, Dave. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? I can't really see. Okay. Everybody's on. Uh, okay, that passes six zero.
You don't have to, like someone.
Yeah, it's, uh, so there, there is no further agenda regarding the charges. All right. Anything, anything, Diane Hay? Oh, my great.
I'm going to approve resolution 22, that 11 issue, uh, starts with the government for two big old minor app.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay. So this is the first time we're doing a certificate of appropriateness. Um, I figured you'd, I can give a regular agenda item. I anticipated the future that could routine, uh, for, for COA, which are recommended by the Harb, that we will uh, just put on the agenda. It's a small project. Well, this is our first. Uh, we can talk a little more about it. I know that Kevin is online and just to discuss as a member of the Harb. All right, so Kevin, do you like to talk a little about the certificate of appropriateness?
Sure. I just want to make sure I'm not screaming or whispering. I know you said it was a little loud in there.
Uh, I think the volume is going to be.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We can really turn that off on other side.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe a little bit.
All right. So the first, um, COA we had was actually one of our, probably one of the more simpler projects that we've seen that requires a COA. Um, and I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity to kind of look at the COA that, um, Dennis typed up. It was essentially just the reconstruction of a projecting porch um, that they re-roofed. They wanted to add some handrails and change a portion of it to a, um, open pergola, like a pitched open pergola. Um, and that, just by the letter of the law, requires a COA to come through Harb and then ultimately get approved by council. Uh, so we met with the applicant at our monthly Harb meeting. Uh, we worked back and forth with the architect, the owners. And, uh, we came to just an agreement on a design, uh, which ultimately was approved by Harb. The stipulations are in the COA. Um, I don't think this needs to be discussed in great detail by council. Uh, but the goal is that at some point we see a handful of these. We see the type of direction that we want these, um, designs to go towards. And Harb has the ability to create their own standards that can then be approved administratively by me as the building code official. Um, unfortunately, until we have those standards, they have to be, um, approved by the Harb and then go and be approved by council. So again, this one is really simple. I don't anticipate there being any, um, a lot of in-depth discussion on it, but feel free, you know, to ask us any questions.
And also Kevin, I'm, I'm online too. In case there are any questions, I'm happy to jump in. This is Dennis.
And this is the chair of our heart. So, but do you have any questions here? And, uh, this is a reminder that the Harb Board recommended that the certificate be awarded. Um, there was some conditions, I guess, that you, uh, sorry, I'm.
He, yes, this, this particular project, um, had a, had a, had a wraparound, original wraparound porch. They were hoping to make it a front only porch. Um, and we actually, they came to the meeting, we negotiated the project with them. And so the, the porch is going to wrap, but we are allowing them to use a section of it as, as the pergola. They'd expressed interest in trying to get more light into the main living space. So, uh, they'll be putting a pergola, but we asked them to, uh, to make the, the, the shape of the pergola match the, the rafters of the porch so that it would still read, it'd still be able to read that wraparound porch. And they, they agreed to that. So we, we then, uh, we, we then approved it, uh, and then sent it on to you all.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, okay, uh, let's vote on resolution 2022 11 to issue a certificate of appropriateness for 215 Marion Avenue. All those in favor? And opposed? Okay, thank you. That passes, uh, six zero. And thanks, uh, Kevin Dennis, uh, for being a part of our.
Hi, guys.
Yeah. Okay, 9B is a public hearing. Can we, uh, motion a public hearing? Or do you? Okay, I forget.
Technically, what, what we would do is be adjourned, the meeting, adjourned into the, sorry, adjourn the meeting into.
I will, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting into a public hearing for single use plastics ordinance amendments. Okay, for a second, that will, I'm in favor of adjourned. Okay, uh, yes, okay. Uh, we are adjourned into this, uh, public hearing.
So we'll, uh, commence this public hearing on the ordinance, uh, regulating a single use product, products, uh, in the borough of Norbert, three ordinance. Exhibits for this hearing first is Board Exhibit One, which is the post ordinance itself. Board Exhibit Two is the submission or proof of submission of that post ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library in August 21st, 2023. Board Exhibit Three is the proof of advertisement, a legal notice, uh, advertising tonight's hearing, which is published on September 3rd and 10th, 2023, in the mainline Times. Um, this is an ordinance, uh, that would amend our current plastics ordinance or plastics chapter to make a single use product regulations chapter as it no longer just deals with plastic, but also deals with, uh, expanded polystyrane food service products. Uh, it also addresses or continues to address, uh, plastic straws as it, as our ordinance has always done. Uh, it also, uh, results in a plastic bag ban, uh, single use plastic bag ban. And also applies to single use plastic utensils. The utensils and the polystyrane food service products commence on September 3rd, 2024. So about a year, uh, from this month, uh, there's still an exception for, uh, single use plastic utensils that they. Uh, there's still an exception for, uh, single-use plastic utensils that they are being, uh, sold for ten cents for the utensils that necessary. There is still a remaining, um, exception that if someone asks for a single-use plastic straw, uh, a straw could be provided. Uh, there was discussion of this ordinance in depth at the last meeting. There was a request that an exemption be put in, which was added to this related to recycled paper bags. Uh, so essentially say that the section related to recycled paper bags is not prohibited for commercial establishment from providing the customer with a previously used paper bag, whether or not it's a recycled paper bag at no charge. So again, this would not prohibit businesses from using, uh, previously used paper bags and getting them out without having to charge a ten cent fee. If it's a new paper bag, it would be a ten cent fee. Obviously, there's no fee if you were to bring your own bag, and that's really what this ordinance is encouraged and seen people to do. Uh, and there is a, now a prohibition on providing single-use plastic bags. Uh, there will be temporary science requirements, uh, to, to notify, uh, that businesses will be required to put up to notify, uh, businesses and the customers of these changes that would go in in sixty days after the act of this ordinance, so adopted today, sixty days from today, and would remain up for six months, uh, thereafter. And the enforcement mechanisms are the same, with the same fines and costs, uh, and the same exemptions that were previously in our codes, but now again applying to those different parts. So that is a summary of the ordinances that were used today. As noted previously, Narbor was the first municipality to, to pass any regulations on, on plastic. In the Commonwealth, a number of municipalities since that time have followed Narbor's lead uh, and have expanded, uh, into, uh, these additional single-use products and then for that ban, ban, banned bags. There was a period of time where there was, um, a moratorium on passing such laws in the Commonwealth that has long passed by at least over a year. And since that time, I can think of three or four municipalities that have passed the similar ordinance, uh, like this in the last six months.
The King of Pressure Mall can do it. All right, any discussion considering the hearing?
I just had a question. I could probably have tried for me, but, um, if I get to deliver it and out from a business that's, um, operated in Narbor, it would have no power, a business is not in Narbor.
Nor, nor could it. Any other questions this time? So we have a public comment?
Yeah, there's a public comment on this ordinance on?
Yeah, so this is only related to this plastics ordinance, uh, the single-use, uh, ordinance.
Yeah, I just wonder if, if, if it was permissible from the Department of Public Health to reuse paper bags for such use to deliver food.
Your name, sir?
John Millar, two fourteen, Marion Avenue.
Yeah, I'm not aware of. I mean, I, it certainly would have to follow all their health regulations, if that was a health regulation. This wouldn't change the health regulations that are placed in.
But there was some comment in the ordinance about the condition of the bag.
I think that, you know, right now we have a business, you know, shift sustainable goods, which uses paper bag on this model. So they didn't want, they wanted to allow them to keep using their model. They're, they're not selling it. Uh, it's a good point.
It's important, the whole idea, but I just didn't know if it was go against some research.
There are businesses that are non-food businesses, um, that are product services, uh, that easily could do not, we're not dealing with children.
I think perhaps we'll notify, we'll notify restaurants. We're gonna notify our business of this requirement. We will suggest for restaurants that this may not be viable.
And, and again, they, they may be doing that now. And this doesn't impact that at all. It just says that they have been doing that. They need to do it and not be subject to a charge. Uh, so again, it doesn't replace any other requirements that are on them from any other health or sanitation licensing laws.
And for a public comment? Okay.
Uh, so with that, uh, we close this public hearing, uh, and then we adjourn back.
Okay.
For the ordinance, a down position to be voted on.
Right, so now, uh, Ryan's the, you know, the motion.
Uh, I move that we approve ordinance ten fifty-seven for single-use plastic ordinance amendments.
Six second? Okay, well, your main body of the, the, once again, there's an opportunity for discussion if anybody has any more questions or comments.
So, so I mean, have, I know this one take effect for a while. To my understanding, but have the businesses, um, has anybody discussed the businesses at all?
It, it was, it was, um, published, the businesses. Uh, and, and it was, it was, uh, sent out by the business station and, and, uh, comments were solicited.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this was all that invited.
No, I know, yes, um, we've come, we've come under some
Good points.
scrutiny, and I noticed, uh, late, so I would like to be sure that we're notifying people.
Yes, yeah, of course.
And, and a smaller note, the current ordinance would remain in effect with current regulations until the regulations take effect. Where there isn't going to be a gap in current plastic.
And, uh, just, uh, as an additional note, uh, the lower Mary has, um, implemented a very similar ordinance already, so.
With the same kind of time, with, with an extended?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, it's kind of movement is kind of spreading throughout the Commonwealth.
All right, uh, let's vote on ordinance ten fifty-seven for single-use plastics. All those in favor? Okay, that's six zero. All right, another public hearing. Do we adjourn into the public hearing?
I move.
Okay, for a second. All right, uh, vote to adjourn to a public hearing. All those in favor? Okay, uh, we're in a public hearing for the, uh, dispersion of uses.
So we commence this hearing on this zoning amendment. So it's being shortened, it will be referred to as the dispersion or dispersion of uses ordinance that would establish a thousand-foot distance requirements between regulated uses and adult uses in the five B district. Uh, and the three hundred fifty-foot distance requirement between personal service uses, which is defined term in the code of the same type and dry cleaners on Haverford Avenue and North Narbor Avenue in the five A district. Five exhibits, uh, first exhibit one is the ordinance itself. Exhibit two is proof of this, uh, ordinance being submitted to the Montgomery County Law Library for public inspection, which was submitted on August twenty-first, two thousand one point three. Exhibit three is a proof of advertisement of the legal notice for tonight's hearing, which was published in the Main Line Times on September third and September tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Exhibit four is proof of submission of this ordinance to the Narbor Planning Commission for Review, which is a proposed zoning ordinance change, submitted on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Exhibit five is proof of submission of this ordinance to the Montgomery County Planning Commission, which was submitted on the same day of August eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, again, this has been an ordinance that was discussed at previous council meetings and, uh, and a few different Narbor Planning Commission meetings. Um, and as the title essentially states, uh, there are currently identified adult uses, uh, and regulated uses that are currently regulated, the five B zoning district. Um, this would, uh, require those uses to be a thousand feet from one another. Um, and five hundred feet from, uh, schools, places of worship, public parks, childcare centers, nursery schools. And I believe that provision currently in here already in the code already. Um, those uses would need to be approved by such an exception. That's already in the code. They'd have to do that special exception here and establish that thousand-foot requirement. A thousand feet came from, uh, planning commission's recommendation, uh, looking at the potential uses, uh, and the potential distance, uh, distances within the five B zoning district. Um, the other part of this unit, this ordinance, has those three hundred fifty-foot regulations for personal care uses, which has been defined term under our zoning code, and a dry cleaner, which is defined term under our zoning ordinance, uh, but only, uh, in five A districts and only for buildings fronting Haverford Avenue or North Narbor Avenue. Um, and it also expands the definition of personal care to provide essentially more examples of what some personal care uses may be. So again, that's not a new definition. Those are just, uh, I think before it was focusing on barber shops and hair salons. Uh, and this provides, it's synonymous terms and other examples of personal care businesses, but which doesn't include modern acts and, and that would modern act. Are there any comments from the public related to this proposal ordinance change? I think now turn it over to council for discussion at the hearing on the ordinance change.
All right, so we did have some comments from planning commission and the emergency piece, so we'll address them now or at the next agenda?
Probably is.
Uh, so planning commission Alex Seemey and the Montgomery County Planning Commission lawyer suggests that we basically approve this mostly as written, however, that we, uh, make sure the methods by which the distances are measured is made consistent and is made certain of accuracy. Um, did you sell those comments?
I, I disagree with the county planning commissions. And in fact, this was done purposely to avoid a business on Haverford from creating an alternative entryway to building the charger around this, this, and then saying, oh, no, this is where by establishing it as the primary entrance to the building that has, that has the frontage on Haverford Avenue. So there'd be no way for a business to try to get around it. Um, the distance requirements between three hundred fifty and a thousand, we have a requirement from the Harvard Planning Commission.
I don't think that's a good question.
But so where it's measured from, I mean, I think it's concrete, it's able to be measured. Ultimately, the process will come in, that someone will come in for a use permit for proposed use in one of these buildings. And, uh, Kevin Walsh would need to see that, oh, that is one of the uses that would be subject to this ordinance and would do a measurement from, if it's an adult use, the, the building footprint, which is measurable as the building. Um, and if it's, uh, from the five A district from the door, uh, then three hundred fifty feet, whether it's measured according to Google Maps or measured. But I think there is, there is concrete abilities to measure whatever from. I don't think that, and it's purposely done to have it from the building and not the entryway. Um, for the five B district, I think personally because of the, the land and the size and the potential for, to not have, uh, essentially strip mall with different types of uses, they want to separate them from the properties itself.
But so you're, you're saying even if we call it the entryway for both of them, that would be potentially called for a one thousand feet?
You don't think you could measure from the entryways for both? But, but I think you would still have undesirable uses close to each other in the five B district, not?
I mean, the entryway is still to be a thousand feet apart.
But it could be in the same apartment, it could be in the same property.
Not there, I mean, nothing's that big, I think. I mean, you know, it's a strip mall, it's a quarter mile long.
It's I, I, I don't know, but I have to look. But the issue is, is it measurable? Yes, and I was assuming that the, like, the planning commission, when they were looking at to see if they want to give these uses uh, separated, but still have the viability to have uses to be there, use that measurement to make that determination. Now, certainly going to the doorways, there'd be more availability to have those uses, but I, I don't believe that's an, an issue for enforcement purposes, uh, as a
They also suggested that we change it as the current flies to make sure that's, I'm assuming that's the intention, but not like distance on roadway or something. Distance outside, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't believe. I think that's how we would. I mean, it would be measured by doing a, a for us, I guess, yeah. But there's the measurement from the areas, but again, for three hundred fifty in Haverford, it's have to be from Haverford, so it would be spiritual.
Correct. Any other thoughts on this?
I guess my question is, I know that, I, I believe that you, you've written other similar ordinances for other municipalities, is that how the ordinance has been written? And has there been a problem with?
No, there hasn't been. Early on, there actually hadn't been identifications of how to make measurements. Uh, and then the municipalities had said we want to make it from here, but using these measurements influence some, sometimes a proper line, not the building, sometimes it's the building, sometimes it's the entryway. They, they can be tracked down, uh, and then measured, but they're not being one. It, but again, it's a matter of preference as to where council would like to make that from.
All right, so they also did suggest that if we keep the building footprint in the five B, we specify whether it's from the closest point of the building or the new use is, or from any part of the building footprint, so it could be a far corner of the and so probably you'd say the closest point.
I think that's what we assumed, that, you know, you're, you have a building, you have a building, those buildings need to be a thousand feet, right?
I mean, that's my interpretation, but if they're suggesting that we should clarify, then perhaps we should clarify.
No, I, I, I don't think so. I think it's very possible for us to maintain a consistent methodology determining distances as to where, if you will. I don't see legislative issues with that.
In practice, how is that going to be measured? Is that by the, by Kevin?
It would be done by Kevin, yeah.
And it would be done when someone is applying for a use permit. And obviously, it would have to be something to trigger this use, or Kevin would do an evaluation as the zoning officer. And if, and if it is, the, the use would be denied. Keep in mind that the, uh, adult uses, they also were only approved via special exception. So it would be up to them to come to approve the zoning hearing board that they meet that criteria, as well from the parks and, uh, places of worship and other exceptions that are current. And frankly, since, you know, they, there are all good variances. It wasn't issued to convene if, if there is anything where there's a new situation or, um, uh, there are exceptional circumstances or hardship, um, they, they have all seen the variances.
So does anyone, okay, does anybody have any other comments about the other, you know, their suggestions from planning or other?
Well, I mean, I think the, the underlying, you know, tone in both mouths, um, although they had different potential outcomes, is like, are we limiting the ability for businesses, um, you know, to open, um, you know, in this area? Because we do have, I mean, for other reasons, we have a lot of vacancies, and as some concern expressed in both letters about it, you know, it being two or three.
Do we have, I mean, aside from two thirty, Haverford, I don't see vacancy as an issue, and just to respond to that, it's, you know, it's I mean, that's why you have a variance in economic hardship, right, is that you're not, you're not preventing a, a property owner from renting, you can get the variance. And aside from two thirty, Haverford, because it's under development, we actually don't have vacancy.
Well, we have some, but it's
Not, not a lot.
No, it's not a problem.
I think, I think we would prefer to have business owners kind of push over to find somebody who's not a dry cleaner, who's been starting vacancies.
I thought that was in fact.
Yes.
I think we're willing to.
Yes, there are businesses that you are going to be prohibiting them from coming here, because you don't want to have the same business and you would rather have it to first be a uses to the benefit of, of all the rest of the business.
Oh, I wasn't, this is not taking a stand, I'm just saying that it's, it's definitely, it was in both of the letter.
That's correct.
But that is certainly what this will be. And it's a policy incident, council.
I, I suspect for the long-term health of the, the business district, um, uh, it's an interest to not have uh, ten handrests right next to each other. I think for the long-term health of the businesses, you want diversity in businesses to I think for the long-term health of the businesses, you want diversity in businesses to broaden for state customer base. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, another thing to point out, which I think was something that the, um, the planning commission lobbied pretty hard for. Was limiting it to Haverford and Norbert as a way to create some opportunities for some businesses to open in some properties that could be retail or not.
Yeah, a little further away.
A little further away, um, which is a good way to, you know, develop. This will be.
Okay, I'll change that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did have, I think, um, in general, I'm in full support of the ordinance and the intent of it. Um, but I did have some of those concerns, and I think some of it was based by, um, the fact that we didn't limit it to Haverford Avenue and Southwood Avenue. Um, the concern that I also had, um, apart from, uh, not moving with that, it might just complicate or. Like confusing for the business owners trying to open up in Norbert, you know, I think about my parents or business owners and. If they're going through the permitting process and trying to figure out if, you know, they would be allowed, like, I think about that kind of thing. Is that more difficult? But I do think there's things that the borough can do to make that easier, even with this ordinance in place, to make it clear. Um, and I think we have to make a number to, um, make that whole process easier.
Thanks for your question. Do you think we have under, on the web page, information for businesses and permits? I mean, could we put a specialty, you know, putting a special tab on the budget plan? I mean, property owners would definitely know that, but perhaps we call that out and attention to that on our web page.
I think, well, number one, I think it would help to have a point of contact that can answer all those kinds of questions, because I feel like that.
He was just on one.
Yeah, exactly.
Kevin.
Kevin, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and that to be direct, folks, too, I'm trying to set information out with Kevin. Um, but I'm also thinking about, um, a, a property owner who wants to recruit tenants. And I'm not sure if they can, like, fix up those tenants, but, um, um, so it just seems to be easy for them to find. So maybe, yeah, maybe if that information was a little excited, that might be helpful as well. But, I mean, in general, I'm in support.
Okay, I'm not hearing any appetite to from that, this ordinance, anybody else? Regarding to a man, this is a good time. Yes.
Fred, I'll just say that I'm, I'm usually really, because I really appreciate what the Norbert's Planning Commission recommends and how they make recommendations. And so my usual inclination is to say, oh, well, if they recommend, we change something, we should. But, um, hearing John's explanation, um, makes me feel like, well, in this situation. Maybe it's just fine to leave the ordinance the way it was drafted. And knowing too, that if, if it end up being some kind of problems, it's not like this ordinance is, can never be changed. These regulations can be changed, they can. So, um, I feel comfortable with supporting it the way it's drafted.
All right, let's see, further discussions?
That will, um, close the public hearing, and at this time, a hearing is closed. We return back to the public mean where this ordinance is in opposition to go to the public.
Make your motion.
Uh, is it on this?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, a further discussion at this time? Okay, we are moving to approve ordinance ten fifty eight for disverting abuses, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Last public hearing. I'll make a mention during the public hearing.
I understand.
They're sorry. All those in favor of adjourned for public hearing? All right, we are adjourned into a public hearing.
So we will commence on this public hearing, which the zoning amendments and the subdivision land bill that. Chapter amendments, chapter's five hundred and four fifty of the Borough Code. Which, uh, is a comprehensive amendment to ensure consistency with recent updates that I made to both of those codes. And to make some minor revelations to the historic districts, chapter, uh, section three fifteen, ten C eight. I'll, I have five exhibits, and we'll go through a, a brief explanation of why this ordinance has come about. Now, and some commentary related to the Norbert Planning Commission's response to the six, so, uh, council aware of my positions on those. Uh, first, exhibit one would be the ordinance itself. Exhibit two is a proof of submission of this ordinance to the Montgomery County Wildlife Area Inspection on August twenty first, two thousand twenty three. Exhibit three is proof of advertising a legal notice of this hearing, uh, in the Main Line Times newspaper on September third and September tenth, two thousand twenty three. Exhibit four is a submission of this ordinance to the Norbert Planning Commission, where subsequently reviewed as submission was made on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty three. Exhibit five is a proof of submission of this ordinance to the Montgomery County Planning Commission on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty three. Uh, this ordinance came in place, uh, due to the submission of a prior ordinance, the comprehensive zoning and saddle changes. Uh, often related to the rebuilding ordinance that's before the two days council. That was submitted to the Norbert Planning Commission, I think, back in June. Um, they provided comments and did a number of recommendations. And essentially, the purpose of this ordinance was to incorporate those recommendations as council seemed fit at that time. To make those additional changes or corrections to that ordinance. Um, so a number of these changes, uh, as, uh. As enumerated in, actually, check, uh, change the ordinance ten fifty six to make further amendments or changes. The Norbert Planning Commission has seven items of future discussion. Uh, and if I could just go through them very, very quickly. Uh, one is, uh, item B, replace the term setback with step back. I believe that can be done, I don't believe that that is a subsequent change, that change was made. Item two is to clarify language and solicitor and the law to satisfaction of the phrase physical from the street applies to both additions to solar equipment and angle and solar equipment that is parallel to the street. This is related to, uh, a change. Uh, previously, the code only allowed for solar equipment on flat roofs. As long as those, as long as that equipment could not be visible from the flat roof and the level appeared in six feet higher. There was a desire to allow solar panels on non-flat roofs, as long as they remain parallel to the angle of that roof. That addition was added with, by keeping the same language. So, so really, the intent of this ordinance was to only have applied to flat roofs. Because again, it's six feet high up. Um, I believe it reads that way, and I thought that what council desired. So if there was a desire to not allow solar panels to be seen from the street. On angles that I would recommend making additional certifications.
So we.
Yeah. That would be.
That would be from the other side.
You could install. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I would do that.
So if that's what was desired, that's how it reads. Item three, uh, amend the lobby width for mixed-use buildings on Haverford Avenue to six feet, then council originally wanted three feet. Um, and there was apparently a, a, uh, communication issue where the previous letter was, that was supposed to say six, but it said five. Or he said five, they're saying, oh, actually, can you do six? My understanding is related to some anticipated building issues or building projects that come up, five or six. Really, you know, I mean, they were fine with it pretty, but, um, if it's something that you wanted to make a change, you would need to, to, to re-advertise or make that change later. Correcting change in a, a land is a substantive change. Um, but, so they should have been six, except five. Uh, item four, the top graph, the top graph where it should be is, that's easy to make. Um, item V, uh, it seemed that there was a belief that, um, there were some provisions related to. Um, buildings over, what they front facade, uh, maximum width, front facade, that frontage line, uh, more than sixty-five feet. Uh, there were some, there were using zoning codes, some saddle orders, desire to move some more of the regulations to the saddle. This ordinance does that. Um, I also believe that the ordinance only keeps it in the saddle because section K of this ordinance essentially. Says this is what it's now going to read, which reads that, uh, you know, if you have the building, uh, in the five A zoning district. Facing Haverford Avenue on the east side of North Norbert, uh, maximum width, uh, front facade of the frontage line sixty-five feet or second corner properties. And the maximum width shall be a hundred feet or except if developed pursuant to the standards that are established under that saddle section. Um, period. So everything else that was in there has removed, and that's what that section will now read.
The zoning code.
The zoning code reads that way, period. So those items that were then added to the saddle, which do appear. Um, and, and I don't believe were changed, except as recommended by the planning mission. Uh, because that's under subsection B, that was added, so that's now in the saddle, it's out of the zoning. I, I can double check, uh, the prior ordinance, because that was something that was in ordinance ten fifty six. But if it's not clearly what intent was, but I believe it, it should read that way. So I, I do believe that was addressed, and there is not the same provisions in both the saddle and the zoning. And if there was, I think the, the inconsistent provisions here have the intent that it should be in saddle. So ultimately, it will be in saddle, I don't believe another amendment is needed to address that, that comment, if, if it needs to be addressed. The, the next two were items that were specifically discussed by council, uh, at, at a council meeting and decided to proceed in the way that it was done. One was to include the recommendation for a hard advisory review for modifications of ADA compliance and regulated improvements, uh, under. So this is related to the historic district act, what we're doing. Or council members, at the time of enactment, there was a, a desire to not enforce that provision related to, um. Uh, ADA compliance and related improvements. Think again, just due to the concern that it could add months onto the processes, you saw today for specific correctness, could potentially be added. In order to get that, and that accessibility structures in place.
Yeah, it's an advisory review, not the COA, but that's the intention. And I do want to point out to council that the, the hard chair has also reached out to me and asked to have a session to talk about. You know, and work of lessons learned from the hard and, and changes that could be made to, you know, a hard review. So I feel like this and the next item might fit better in that rather than putting it back into this bill.
So, so again, the, the, there was a desire to, to not enforce it, so why have it in there? Uh, and, and so it was taken out, and I think the idea is, well, we want to keep that in there, but that's not what council expressed in fact to do. Uh, item Y, include recommendations for hard reviews and COA recommendations for applications for solar panels that, that do not meet current solar panels zoning standards. I think, I think council had a pretty lengthy conversation on this issue, uh, because it was originally proposed. And council said, no, we don't want to do that, and as a result, that was not provided, uh, in this, this version.
All right, let's see, we'll pause here for a second, yes, Paul. And I know Barbara has been going over the other recommendations from the MCPC that planning commission did not specifically address. So there's, there's a few more typos. I'm assuming nobody in council has a problem fixing the typos and setbacks that.
Because can be done.
So we will make those changes. Um, I'd like to hold off on the, uh, on the six feet thing, because that, that section would be a little bit harder to read every time. Does anybody in council feel like we should add back in the hard advisory reviews for the ADA compliance? Or the hard review for solar panels? You know, I'm making a case for that, we have already discussed this, we pulled this out, planning commission wants it back in. All right, I don't see any interest in that. So let me hold off on that, on the six foot, and Barbara, do you want to go? Are you able to go over the, the other list of things that you want?
Sure, I, I checked with Todd to, um, see, you know, what they're, how, what they're, what the planning commission's position were on some of these. So, um, there, there are a couple that are clearly typos. In the, um. Bear with me while I get oriented here. In the Montgomery County Planning Commission's, um, letter. Um, they noted a typo in design for mixed-use buildings, this is on page. Three, I guess, they don't have page numbers, okay. Um, new saddle requirements, a typographical error in number three, um, and. Todd said, yes, that should be reflected, so that's a typo. Um, then in, um, green building, A accessory dwelling units under generators, there's a phrase that. Um, just, it was, some kind of drafting error happened, so he felt that was something that could be corrected as well. And I can read that to you, John, whenever you want to write that down. And then, sorry?
He's looking at the MCPC letter, so I don't know why I'm going to, I'm sure.
Yeah, and then there was another typo in, in terminology, um, item A, that, um, they agreed to. The places where, um. That were addressed, that weren't addressed, um. One was the, um. Whether the lobbies on Haverford Avenue frontage should have a depth added to them, as, as opposed to just a width. And, um, he said the planning commi, in the Montgomery County Planning Commission was suggesting we might want to consider that. And Todd said the, the planning commission wasn't able to come to a consensus on what would work, so they didn't feel that we needed to change the ordinance at this time. But I, I wanted to let you know about that. And then, item C one, um, was this question of, of having the Harb do. Uh, review of all exterior materials? Um, and there's some issue with that, I think, Fred, um.
Well, so the, the proposal, the, the legislation says that Harb each one is kind of, I'll give you a text, one of the injects. So basically, this is a, this is a new, um, uh, new, a new peruse of the heart, it's.
It's under the saddle, so this is under section B, so this is one you're dealing with, the mixed-use building with a front facade exceeding sixty-five feet.
Right.
There's previous language that was originally presented, I think by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, to say, can't have vinyl siding.
Right.
And stuff, and then the, the Norbert Planning Commission looked at that and said, we don't, we don't want to make it an absolute, and this is for something that's from the street. We don't want to make it an absolute, can't have something, we want, we want the Harb to provide a recommendation. So it was drafted, um, to say that the Harb, um, I guess, needs to decide the materials. Uh, and not, not blanketly saying you can't have something, but for the Harb on it. Now, it is a saddle, not, um. Not a zoning amendment, um, but it does provide, at the request of the Norbert Planning Commission, the Harb laying into materials. And when that wasn't something that was previously.
I mean, it didn't look to me like the Harb has to approve it or you can't do it. So I, when I read that, I said, oh, well, the Harb is kind of, it's going to have, have approval.
I, I would agree, at the same time, it is a, it isn't a saddle, so it's something that you could always weigh that the necessary is, is counsel. Uh, not in zoning, um, it could be, it could be changed. Ultimately, if you're trying to regulate the materials of a building, there needs to be some sort of objective, yes or no. And if you just say, whatever, you know, they're, they're, they're to make a recommendation. The developer can say, well, great, I made a recommendation, but what tell me I can't use plastic or vinyl siding? Or whatever is desired to be regulated, so if there's a desire to regulate what something looks like or the materials that are used. Um, particularly, the thing is, only if it's, uh, otherwise subject to the Harb, uh, and is visible in the street. Uh, before they write the way to get the materials here, this, this would say that they, they shall make, uh, a recommendation on.
I'm just thinking how this is going to play out, and then just every time they. And then just every time they make a change, they're going to have to come in front of the Harb? Like if they're changing their project all, yeah?
If you read the ordinance too, there, there's an administrative review process involved that allows Kevin, you know, as a resounding administrator to review it and determine appropriateness. Ian and I had a good conversation about this and really, you know, it, the challenge comes down to, you know, having kind of open ended criteria. And if we had like a list of approved materials or, you know, zones and stuff like that, that would make it a lot easier administratively to review.
And that's what it was before, and essentially said you cannot have these two things. And that was recommended to be changed from the Norbert Planning Commission. Uh, but again, all council wants to do is say, we just don't want plastic vinyl siding along the fronts of these buildings.
The more flexible you make it, is, the Harb is going to be a good administrator. And it's going to require those type of more intensive reviews. But if you make it more standardized, these are the materials, these are the styles, that's a little bit easier for us to administer.
I mean, I feel like what's in there now is very, I mean, obviously inflexible. It's something you have to go in front of the Harb and get approval for every material that came from the street, which, I don't know.
No, I, I, it is onerous and it adds extra time to a review. And, you know, if it gets tabled at Harb, which they can do, um, you know, let them send out their process. Um, so it can, it can add time.
Yeah, actually, I mean, thinking back when we adopted this, all the arrangements, and then it was a long laundry list of things that we could do. We really wanted to say we didn't want to like, I don't think that's forward. And I'm regarding, like, which got me that every material that's been repeated in Harb, because those are the areas that have to be addressed.
And again, there was, in, in the past, the Sado required the Norbert Planning Commission to review the materials. Maybe they called in, bring in, or the materials.
But we brought it to council too, to hammer, to steam it forward.
Uh, during, during the plan review process. And in, in this situation, again, it was only because the language provided, they didn't want these certain materials. I, I'm assuming the Norbert Planning Commission wanted to leave that open for potentially allowing those materials, allowing that to really let the Harb, and take that to the Harb to decide. Um, and that's what brought it out, of course. Okay. Outsiders, we probably will get a question. But again, so if the council wasn't want that to happen, then you could not pass this tonight. You could pass it as it is and do amendments. You could also put six feet instead of five. Um, but there is also the idea of if a developer wanted to ask for a waiver from that section where they didn't have to do that, since it's in Sado, they could ask for a waiver. Your, your concern.
All right, so then the two provisions, I think it was something that everybody required to be advertised and that and changing the, taking five to six. So let's, let's hold off on that for the time being. Does anybody have any other concerns that I haven't yet discussed at this time?
Brad, can I just mention one other thing that, um, wasn't covered in the Norbert Planning Commission's, um, letter? Just so everybody knows, just to be complete, the, um, uh, the Montgomery County Planning Commission was, this was in green building, um, uh, renewable electricity purchases. They were suggesting adding something that allowed property owners to offset their electricity purchases with the purchase of renewable energy credits. And, um, the Montgomery County, uh, I mean, the Norbert Planning Commission didn't agree with the county's recommendation. And so they felt the ordinance could stay as drafted on that point.
I, I think that might technically be how some of the, you know, green energy providers, you know, if you go to P A power switch and you say, I want my power a hundred percent clean. I think that is how a lot of them are doing it, because they are, you know.
I know, and for some reason, the, the county, I mean, the county even says that, but says they're suggesting you change it.
So the question is, does planning commission understand this and they think it's fine or, I don't know.
The Norbert's pla, the Norbert's Planning Commission said they don't endorse, they don't, they don't, they don't recommend changing the ordinance to match what the county is saying.
And I really think that from enforcement want to do. Pretty likely, well, they're going to allow either.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I think we can ignore that. Um, any other of issues that have not been raised, or are there, anything, okay?
Uh, so I guess to see if there's any public comments on this ordinance.
I see none. So does council want to talk more about the, um, do we feel, so the, the five to six foot issue, do you have, could go either way?
Well, I mean, it should go to six feet, but, but we have to delay, that's exactly.
Yeah, if it goes to six feet, we're going to re-advertise and we'll, um, we'll have to pass it in next month, all right?
Well, whatever, yeah, I mean.
Twenty-first, thirty days.
But they were comfortable with three feet and.
Originally, council put it in three.
Council put it in three. I don't think the way I conditioned put it in three, council put it in three.
No, I think originally it was twelve.
Right, it was twelve, and Michelle walked it out.
But there could be, like, if someone wanted to put an application in network property, they, they, a variance could be issued. They, they, if they said, we want six, not five, they could get variance. But it's my understanding that potential developments either being proposed. This might be subject to, maybe they were, so I don't like that.
Okay, so this is, it's not like a time tentative issue or nothing.
No, it's not a time tentative issue, to six is not missing.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's my understanding, no one says cross seven.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, we can say, yeah, all you have to do is get a variance, but I think that's a little bit old.
But if we put in an amendment, we're going to have to advertise the, the, uh, the amendment, right?
Yeah, and it needs a whole ordinance.
No, no, I'm saying, like, we, after this.
Right.
On this, I take another issue, again, it's currently three. You've been moving to five, which is closer, so again, you, you're going to hang up on this. You could always pass this if you want to do a new ordinance. Just that, you could do that.
It would have to get advertised.
It would have to be advertised, but then it's, you are, it's moved every couple of years.
Yeah. I'm trying to keep that by, by five, so.
Okay.
And if anyone wanted to see if five is an issue with, with anybody, you know, who this may apply to, then call on that. Just really see if there's a need.
All right, and then so we're, we're left with the Harb, um, review of materials. Everybody else drawn a pin here?
It's our intention.
It wasn't, uh, however, as has been pointed out, they could ask for a waiver.
I think we should steer clear with our intention in the Harb.
Well, again, if we remove this portion, I mean, we're going to have to re-advertise and, uh.
Or you can enact and do a new ordinance to change it, act America. It, it's still, that's probably actually why people are just doing that.
Yeah, the Harb, the Harb wants us to do kind of ordinance, uh, to clean up some language and, and, you know, they want to talk to us about doing any other cleanup ordinance for the Harb, so possibly we can.
No, but if someone files plan between now and when we revise it.
They're going to, it's going to apply unless they ask for a waiver.
Well, if, if they, well, if they file a plan and you later change the code, they will get the benefit of your change in the code. But they could also move forward. Yeah, but if you don't know, maybe more restrictions of the Harb would have more to say, right? That's the amendment, right?
Right now, it gives them more to say.
Yeah.
What we would, what we would pass now, would give them more to say.
The Harb.
Yeah, right, so the, the old language was, uh, yeah, you can't use vinyl siding or something, plastic or vinyl siding. The new version said this, you have to clear your materials with the Harb. They have to approve of your materials that are visible on the street if you have sixty-five foot or more mixed use buildings. So there's only a couple buildings where this would apply.
And they are still going to the Harb, so still need the COA in general. This just adds an additional aspect to that related to the materials.
And it's a recommendation.
That's not. Well, then you shall enact.
It's, it's not great, in my opinion, but they could ask for a waiver. Fair enough.
And then we'll do the cleanup anyway.
Then we can do a cleanup later.
I'm so confused, cleanup makes it less onerous on the developer or more?
Right, well, right now, what we're passing brings the, the Harb has to clear any materials that are visible on the street. That's what we're passing tonight.
Right.
So I'm saying that we could change that provision in the future.
But the, the Harb presumably wants us to keep it the way it is, right?
They do.
Yeah, so we can keep it the way it is right now, but the developer could apply for a waiver.
Right, in that section.
Yeah, if we, if we pass this tonight and it makes the Harb, you know, this is the Harb, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, they can apply for a waiver if it's wrong. I mean, I, I think it's not a problem to like present them to the Harb and say, people, you have, you know, have a discussion, but I don't, I don't think I want the Harb weighing in on every single item. And then if they change it down the line, they could.
Look, I'm just going to say, what I think is the challenge here is, is there a specific architectural aesthetic you're looking to achieve? And if there is, then it makes sense to have it reviewed. If you don't have a specific aesthetic that you're trying to accomplish, this type of regulation makes no sense or avoid it. Right, I mean, it's worth avoiding because it's, it's going to hinder people's projects. People may not agree with the style. Um, this type of ordinance is implemented in communities that have, you know, like a consistent architecture that they want to preserve and continue to carry on throughout the community. If we don't feel like we have something like that, I wouldn't recommend us doing it because, you know, it, it would be.
So, Ken, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think we're, we're on the same page as you. It was just a question of, do we pass this tonight and then change it later? Or do we not pass this tonight and then, because I think there's stuff that, you know.
I recommend passing it and then also include a motion that you want, uh, wish the director, planning commission prepare and then, you know, to the extent of what you really.
Well, as, as to your point, the question is, I know, even if you're not trying to maintain a, a, a comprehensive aesthetic that, that you want, but if there's an aesthetic you really don't want, but you, you don't have a, this could be the, huh?
Yeah, start and also.
Yeah, true.
Yeah. Fred, can we pass, I'm comfortable passing this tonight and then we'll be understanding that there is a waiver process and then we can revisit this at a later point when we clean up the Harb.
Or, yeah, okay.
Or do a waiver. I mean, again, you're going to have to advertise the ordinance.
Yeah, I would say not.
You won't, you didn't want to incorporate that.
We can just add it the next time we advertise something, we'll, we'll have more coming.
Do you want, do you want to just, uh, pass it with amendment and then advertise it?
Re-advertise this one.
Re-advertise and then?
No, I think, I think we want to pass this, there's, there's a lot of other stuff that we have.
Forget that, I agree.
Or to have. But I think that's what, I think that's what, all right. So I'm not here, I'm here only make the typos and the non-sets changes we were going to have done. And the rest of it.
But I think we're still ending here.
Yeah, we, we have an adjournment here, yeah.
Fred, you're, you're, you're saying that we would, we would not change the five feet to six, but we would now, but we would do that down the road, I think, right?
Hmm.
Yes, no? Or considerate?
Yeah.
If you needed, uh, internally, if it was something that, you know, if they're.
If you needed.
Okay.
All right, I'm not hearing any more discussions at this time, so if you can exit.
We'll adjourn the public hearing and we'll turn back into the public meeting where this ordinance is now officially voted upon by council.
Okay.
Brad, do we need to itemize all the typos? Well, I guess this may be a question for John, itemize the typos and the one drafting correction?
No, I, I, I think that we can just do it pursuant to the, uh, to the review letters, as I've said before.
Yeah, why don't you just, you know?
I will, I'll, I'll forward Todd's email to you, John.
I do need a motion to put this, uh, to.
Send it.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay.
With the typographical.
Yeah, so we are, we are talking about, well, when we, when we come to a vote, we're going to vote on a group meeting with the typographical changes.
Not those changes.
Not those changes that have been recommended by M C P C and planning commission. Um, any further discussion before we move to that? All right, uh, we are voting on ordinance ten fifty-nine for, uh, comprehensive, comprehensive donate ordinance amendments, uh, including typographical and non-sets changes, I would recommend, by the planning commission and the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Uh, all those in favor, passing. We opposed, okay, this is all for six year. All right.
To the referee.
Yeah.
And then we've got solid extended.
Fred, could we consider turning the air about one minute? Did anybody else, Todd?
Yes, yeah, okay. So once again, uh, you can speak up, so Barbara can hear.
Thank you.
I think.
Yeah, I move that we advertise solid waste ordinance amendments.
Second.
Again.
Okay. Solid waste ordinance. So in this discussion.
Um, yes, um, good in your packet, they played out a brief memo, um, explaining uh, both the proposed amendments, um, and, uh, and the RFP, um, which is a proper later consideration in your agenda. Brad, open that document here. Okay, sorry, um, now that I. Okay, so, um, we're adding our current service agreements. It's intended to be three years, there is new coverage, shouldn't be carried on to four years.
It was listed wrong.
It was listed wrong, so, um, included, uh, peer consideration are a number of different areas where, uh, discussion took place at the public health and safety committee. Um, among one of the considerations was a discussion of classifications. Uh, these would be the classifications women use in order to build customers, uh, for collection services through the Duro. The, ultimately, it was recommended that the only modification be made to the existing multifamily dwellings classification, which, uh, used to just be five or more dwelling units. And it was instead limited to three to five dwelling units. Uh, and, and that change needed to effect additional discussions, uh, came up also regarding um, apartments, um, and, uh, rental properties that have more than ten units. In that situation, it was determined that those properties could then be subject to the commercial property rate. Now, I have been able to review the existing rate structure, when I have come to find is that we were billing, uh, the larger apartment units, one hundred dollars per unit um, in previous rate structure. Um, so we will need to come back at some point and rediscover the classifications, uh, rate rates. Yeah, the classifications for the rates to come up with something that we'll find is reasonably fair on the users. Um, I'm, I don't see it not working, but there may be some issues that we'll need to sort. And that will come from the upcoming meeting. The other discussion, uh, that continued was the continuation of shared dumpsters and garbage collection arrangements that are primarily occurred here, uh, in, in the downtown area. Um, was ultimately determined that, you know, we would attempt to preserve those setups, especially due to the limited space, uh, place of additional dumpsters. Um, so that might usually exist, that would allow that to continue. Um, further discussion went on to units of waste, particularly as it pertains to limits on what can be disposed per collection. Uh, the, the committee recommended, uh, a limit, no. Uh, the, the committee recommended, uh, a limit of one ninety-six gallon, uh, container or, uh, containers that together collectively were ninety-six gallons. Um, that is the layer that is included in the ordinance right now, uh, council missions, you know, this would be a good opportunity for us to decide to amend that quantity to be something that we might think is, uh, favorable to the community. Obviously, uh, limiting the quantity is favorable to us to get more affordable rates. Uh, but obviously there is, besides that coin. Uh, the next item, uh, was, um, the consideration of what we were going to, and this, this next part, although I didn't really clarify this in the memo, I'm starting to transition into the RFP discussion.
All right, let's hold on so I'll. RFP's part of the text.
Or, I mean, yeah, uh, we, we didn't put anything into the ordinance for the composting primarily because, uh, right now it, it would appear that we wouldn't have the ability to have program if we didn't have a site that hosted. The borough doesn't have an appropriate property that we own that could host it. And Lord Mary doesn't have anything as a gas, so, um, we're recommending that be taken for, you know, future consideration, uh, but it's not really ready, um, to go into this ordinance certainly.
All right, uh, Barbara, you ready for questions?
Yeah, it's, it's a very complicated ordinance, you know, the impressive, um, the business district, the shared dumpsters, the many different kinds of dwellings in the borough, but it's very complex. You know, I mean, Matt West, one of our previous managers, took a lot of time just trying to figure it out. And then Ken's been figuring it out and so, um, it took a lot of time, also pretty committee, better. Sort through a lot, but I think we've established a place where we're all on the safety edge and we've published a couple things. Uh, one was the limited number of cans that would be in, in the sidewalk, um, like in front of an apartment building where there is no saving verge stays between the sidewalk and the two. So we have that in place. Uh, we also are stipulating the borough contract would include the businesses, you know, and so this way we have one holler, one main contract instead of multiple haulers crisscrossing the borough. Um, so I think we've accomplished what we wanted to. Um, this, this ordinance, like Ken says, does not set the rates. That would be for the set of provision, but it's, um, so this is what's needed for us to be to handle the HARB and the council.
Does that, the members of the public, that the, the rates for the trash collection are set based on what our trash hauler says they're charging us, uh, to pass it directly on to the residents as best we can. The borough is nearly, uh, pointing the money to finish immediately based on the current. And our intention is to be as close as possible to going to being charged to pass that on to the. Uh, okay. My question is, um, counsel.
Brad?
You have different changes to recommend.
Okay.
Uh, one was a, a change brought up by half person DRO. In fact, you have one unit of waste is in the wrong place in the definitions. That should be their O, not ours. Uh, okay, so that would be moved to the appropriate location. Uh, and then counsel's important, uh, pointed out that under subsection one of the purpose, talks about, uh, keep language in there that says municipal waste removal services cannot be economically provided by the borough to all properties. But, uh, except for industrial establishments, which essentially would be creating unacceptable waste as a term of any ways you, you now would be. So I believe that line should be removed, um, because it's really not accurate, what, what was just. So I, I recommend those two changes with, again, our substantial changes, uh, be made for the ordinance prior to that.
A few questions for those changes. Okay. Uh, Barbara?
Yeah, thank you, John, for, um, seeing that. Um, I had one other, um, question, um, and that's in the storage of waste, which is four three seven dash nine. Um, it, it's, it's addressing the fact that you're not allowed to put waste in any place that you're not supposed to. And the last sentence says, no person shall throw or deposit any waste in any stream or body of water. And I wondered if it would be appropriate to add, or, um, storm or sewer drain or inlet. Um, there are a lot of people that don't realize that that stuff goes into a stream. And, and so I, I thought it might be, i- if that was an appropriate place for that to be, I didn't know if it was somewhere else, you know, in code somewhere, that prohibition, but.
The, probably just, yeah, I know that there are provisions in our stormwater code that provide for that, but, but certainly, that certainly is an easy clarifying change to make, so I, I believe that could be added easily as well.
Uh, during the public health and safety meeting, we were discussing different rates, uh, by commercial users, uh, the, uh, you know, depending on their heavy usage.
Right.
Has, has that been addressed or?
Well, I, I think Ken and John worked that out.
We don't have a rate structure set up yet.
Right, but the, the permanent idea, didn't you have the amendment for?
There, there is an, uh, an option to, to amend someone to seek a, a commercial establishment to seek alternative hauling arrangements through another licensed hauler. I added in recommended language about creating a provision that those haulers be licensed with us primarily, uh, so that one, we have a certificate of insurance to cause any damage to our road or infrastructure, it will be hard uh, to, to lax about on that damage. We don't have that. And two, so that if there are any issues with their routes or times of operation, we would have the ability to basically leverage some requirements on when they can operate. So that it wouldn't be, uh, problematic.
So I think we haven't had the discussion of the exact rates that everybody's going to charge yet. It's going to be a later resolution. We'll pass that hopefully. And we also, once we get the result of the RFP, that's going to help us figure out how the rates change. We don't know, so we see what they're going to charge us.
The ordinance would allow us to, uh, much, much, uh, that, that, actually the dumpster. Uh, we're allowed to try to prevent. So, so.
And, and so for, um, businesses that don't generate rate significantly fresh at all.
You would just have to standard P.
Use standard P.
Everyone's, everyone's paying first name. There is a, there is a. Yeah, I have a question too. So if somebody has more than one unit of waste occasionally, is there any, well, the, uh, the.
It's up to the hauler that's choosing and determining whether or not they're effective or waiting some of those. Either a monitoring sticker or something and then, you know, report it back to us. How do they do that?
Well, I, I'm not worried that they don't take somebody's garbage. I was, I would be concerned about, uh, I don't think that they're likely to have, you know, not allowing it more regularly, putting out way too much garbage will probably, you know, yeah. Someone puts out ten units or something, that's fine. Or somebody has two units at a time, rather than one left there.
Well, and, uh, well, this is why I bring it up. Is you want to just leave it at the one unit or allow two, I believe, or three is. I think it's two, but.
And to clarify with the public that one unit for recycling and one for solid waste, so.
Yeah, it's a little. I think you're ninety-six gallon, you're doing a damn it's good, yeah.
But, but then, then there were two solid wastes to do the cycle.
Well, if you permit that, that's going to give people get a higher rate. So it was good, yeah, but if the trade off is, well, people will be upset that, you know, maybe it seems to only one of their cans and they have three or two or, um, yeah, and I just didn't know how people would react to that.
What, I mean, what do you think? So we said it's one year, but we put that out to the hall. Do you think the haulers are actually, of course, set up?
Um, it depends. For certain, it depends on the blue hog, there is, I've had haulers in, in Florida, uh, to, uh, limits. Just not, not here, animal. I have seen.
But you, you don't.
That's a.
Yeah.
One, it depends on whether you dip them on Christmas or. Uh, I don't have a question, but I think if someone said, if you're putting out ten, it's.
Yeah, well, it's like, you know, if you put a lot of ninety-six gallons, that may be two or three small animals.
Well, and again, when you add flexibility, that's we making force in the HARB. These haulers are not going to spend time, you know, to create danger.
We said it at one and then if people go slightly over, it's not a problem. Whereas the city center law says like, you know, they're, they're.
I would be strictly enforcing.
I, I, I don't think we're usually going to be forcing that to haul. Something in excess.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, there's for people that are going to be throwing trash. Or up the chains that are access, so, so, so. Again, if it's excessive, it's all right, ship to them. They may take note, but in my experience.
Or they'll leave the garbage behind.
That's, that, that would be my concern, the hauler takes exactly one can.
Yeah, and that'd be a situation where if someone reported that, believe under the, the contracts as to be proposed.
Yeah.
We'd be entitled to, to find them and if they were to say, well, here's reason we didn't do it, then you'll find out the reason we were, uh, but, um, I, I would, I would be surprised if, if you need to put out more as well with more access, they're, they're issued.
All right, any other questions about the solid waste ordinance?
Yeah, administratively, would it be possible if they didn't have extra one, maybe two days for that?
That's, that's too.
Clearing your game.
Yeah, well, we'd be official to reconsider too. At some point, how we choose, if we want to continue to build through, uh, the, you know, property tax system, there are still limitations. We won't reach everybody who would be eligible for a service charge. So we will still have to do some independent billing to account for those properties. For instance, institutional, uh, operations, like say Margaret, Margaret School, for example. Uh, in order to build them, we'll have to send them an independent bill. Uh, so the question will be, you know, how do we want to build? Do we want to build all forms? Do we want to do quarterly? You know, those are things to consider in the future.
Uh, we can talk about that when we're talking about the sheets, but.
And, and you could always build two residential units. If they're not two, yeah.
If you ever, I would say, uh, we do need to move this along so we can, uh, get the RFP for contract files. So we did that in months. Let's vote on the endorsement of these solid waste ordinance amendments. I'll point out that, you know, as a resident here, I'd like to do the counter. Much change through this, right, through this ordinance. Um, all right, we're moving on with solid waste ordinance amendments, all those favor advertising. They opposed, uh, six zero. RFP. Question, just, we're like, RFP?
Uh, I move we discuss the RFP, the contract.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Many members of council, uh, the RFP before you, uh, clearly was a little bit of work in progress, so thank you for your patience in helping me identify some of the errors. Um, what's been brought forward in draft. There have been items that have been sorted, um. It's just a couple of areas that do want to make sure by your attention to, um, the RFP, the twelve moving, um. Here, um. I, I did make some adjustments to make sure the hours of operation matched, uh, the ordinance provisions.
You speak there, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, we made changes to make sure that the hours of operations that was on page fourteen, uh, matched ordinance provisions. Um, the section B above that, uh, section A three A. Um, we just clarified, uh, that the one unit, uh, for, um, now it does have this fifty pounds of weight per container and I don't think that it's related to the ordinance. Um, we didn't specify a weight limit. Did you?
I think you could cut that.
We do like, we do like that.
Yeah, we already have a law of them, so.
Okay.
But we allow all tenants, so.
For the rest of the.
Yes, carry the.
Good. Uh, we'll, we'll strike that a little bit. And then, uh, moving on. Um, top of page fifteen, just noting the, the requirement of, of being responsible for dealing with and sorting problems. This is a change. I don't remember how many business hours, but I think we brought down twelve business hours to inform the, the borough of any issues. And, and to work with us to sort out any issues about collecting we have had in the last few weeks. Quite a few instances of collection issues. Either by missed routes or just, uh, backups that is randomly didn't happen, so, um, hoping to have that better communication moving forward.
So we're specifying, they have to, so a resident can call them, they have to respond in twelve hours.
They have to tell us about that.
Okay, what's our, what's our enforcement mechanism that they don't?
Well, I mean, there, there are legions in, in the contract, so, um, that's written down and, um, uh, you know, there, there is, uh, there's performance on that we'll be maintaining if that.
There are a number of provisions in the contract that provide fines. Yeah, and so the monthly fines and the right to withhold that from the money that I feel that. So whether it be more immediate or better, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if that's exactly something that will be on there, but it would be. So you, you're implying that we owe you that, so we're withholding this hundred X amount.
Also, since we're the contractor, we, uh, should the contractor build a department everywhere, um, council shop, I would have to.
We can get public works.
That's.
Sure is that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not.
Our ordinance, but I'm sure it makes great that every world here. But I wouldn't take care of this. It depends, we depend on the severity and the circumstances. It's a tool.
You know, you feel like administratively, God will shoot me to.
I mean, there, there will be, you know, it's a dance and we'll, we'll be candeladered, what, what we think is reasonable to do or need them to do. I mean, a lot of times it seems that it's mostly communication. I had a lot of turnover, but it seems they always have new drivers, like the routes, and so they're skipping in a more obscure parts of the DRO or just missing entire obvious spots. For one reason, we don't know, but other than that they may not just know what the route is. We do have, right now, we've improved a little bit in that we have, uh, field managers, uh, contact that are made to reach out directly. That's been a little bit more helpful. Uh, oh, yeah, I, I think it's, this should be added. Oh, yeah, I, I think it's, this should be adequate. I don't, I don't know what more we could produce for ourselves directly. Give us any more leverage in this.
Question about if the one, um. You started.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. For under service requirements, I feel like we can, uh, address some of the recommendations that all the words I've gone.
So, yeah, you noticed that, uh, you mentioned. Did you consider that the public work is straight in the agents who provide the. For the ball, uh. Reasonable.
The one was, um, when, uh. You're wasting up on Mondays, you know. Monday and holidays. Uh, and the reasons for that, like. A, a lot of people put their leaves out or they do their leaves and we're anyways on the weekend. And they don't want it sitting out for several days. The other thing which really raised the basic pickups was this recommendation was to. Do one truck. Do multiple days, so, um, then we trash pickup on, um. Two, uh, two days, so that would address the loneliness of the shoots. Um, and same with the segue, um, yeah, that, that over two days instead.
So we, I mean, we certainly incorporate those elements, uh, you know, the schedule. Was not necessarily fixed. We were hold up. Like, yes, it's a specific day.
Right, how many times it changed to, it was seven days because they got.
Wait, what, I mean, how are they really, uh, talking about, you know, continuity, um. Maybe an explanation as to how they'll be able to account for missed pickups. Uh, we've been in a twenty four hour period.
One of the issues is when you have a missed pickup on a Friday, no one's generally in the office over the weekends. So it's at least for Monday, uh, when it's trash and moving on, on our road and a lot of the smaller roads where you. It's been a number of missed pickups, um, you're left with it sitting out over, uh, a very long period. So, uh. So if we could avoid, you know, trash pickups exclusively on the Fridays.
That would change, that would change the day.
Yeah.
So are we suggesting that we have more than one? Day for our, for our huge collection or?
I think we should open it up so that, look at the options.
Yeah, I think the potential is stuck in this memo, uh, could be negotiated with.
Right, I agree with that.
But the one that's a little bit, um, more controversial perhaps legitimate comment is the one about spring cleanup week. Because that's a cultural change in, in Garber. The other things are just like, you know. In details, I mean, the reality is that, like, by the time. The trash haul comes around, most of it's done, you know.
I have noticed they should as well, but it hasn't been quite used to be.
But I, I actually looked into this. I was told the usage of, of the cleanup days has gone out dramatically.
Yeah, because it's all gone by the time they get there. People put it out. People don't.
No, but I mean, most of the items I'm told that, that make their way there are things that could have been picked up all collection.
Right, but I still think we could have, uh.
But no, I, I put it in here as an alternate with the assumption that you'll probably want it.
Okay.
Uh, but it's there as, as an option for you to take it out if you want it.
Yeah, but I think it's almost like we should. Pay more, not a flat fee by what they actually take away. Because not much.
I, I think it's important that that's, you know, not, I mean, that's the sharp week of Narberth. It takes off the black party. And I used to say, a lot of these people.
You're paying them, right, paying all this money and you don't have to pay.
But silly, I think, I think we could still do it and not have the, I think we should have a. One day a year where we have like a worldwide.
Ooh, yeah, right, it's good, yeah.
Just do everything out and everybody gets their, their things. But then we have to eat trash that we put around him though.
Yeah.
Um, anything you don't want, uh, still.
Right, right now, it's an option. Yeah, dude, I think it's okay to leave it as an option. Uh, so I, I haven't, I haven't thought about the Friday thing that, uh. Andrew brought up, which is to say that if they have, if, if they propose a pickup on Friday. They should, they should be available to pick it up on Saturday. They, they, you know, it's not how to say, like, it's, it's not a business hour, but. If you're picking it up on Friday and you miss it. We're going to call you and you're going to pick it up on Saturday. I think that should be. Maybe that, that would, you know, that'll lead from the flexibility to stay with Friday, whatever reason, I think it's, it's useful, but that also gives us a recourse. So a lot of the work, because I wish, uh, that, uh, all of them are. Required to. Pick to lack, miss to lack, you would then sort of vary.
Well, you have twelve business hours, just make it twelve hours.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, well, I didn't know it was going to be in the office. I'm, I'm hoping that, like, certainly we, you know.
No, but that means that if somebody calls and they can't get it picked up, then they come to them afterwards instantly. Until they stop it.
I mean, I suppose.
You could find them, because when you call them after hours on a Friday, like, if you, you get home from work and your trash isn't picked up. They're not there either, so.
Well, if they don't make arrangements for it, then they're going to get fined. I mean, we, we should make it clear if they propose a Friday, they, that. They're, they're expecting them to clean up after themselves within twelve, within twelve hours.
And you think limiting from Monday to Thursday would be, would discourage those fine?
That somewhat. What do you think? Well, you know, with the midday, um, I'm sorry, mid beach day, there's really very little excuse to have another traffic problem. Uh, it is the following day, if not later in the day. Because they're, they're, they're subsisting.
So I just, it, it's common for, uh, Fridays.
Okay, then we can say Monday to Thursday.
If you want, and then the other day with Fridays, um. Is all time digital, it really is.
What I recall from the, the last contract, because I was actually going Borough Council when we, when we adopted the last one, um, we. Had no choice about the, the dates, uh, of pickup, and it was partly because. The, uh, waste companies tend to give preference to people who renew their contracts. And they get to choose the dates they want their trash picked up. And so, uh, they, all they had left was Friday pickup. And that's how we ended up with Friday. So, um. I, I'm just, I don't, you know, if we, I don't know if we'll run into that same situation again if we're. Um, not renewing, but I'm just saying that, that was, that was what was explained to us, why, why we had Friday, because we didn't want Friday.
If, if someone just mind mazes here, is this, this goes a little, is it a Logan situation?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, it sounds like you're trying to suggest that it's common to, let me try this, let's just. How about service requirement letter A, the contract, we should have one unit, um, four weeks a week. Uh. Well, um. Uh, I mean, I mean, it's been, uh, Monday and Thursday. It's going to be a change for residents.
I mean, it, it could, it, it could result in a different rate.
Right.
And which means we may have to, you know.
It's already going to be a lot higher.
It's going to be a lot higher, yeah.
Really? I, I kind of.
Okay.
For the best rate.
It's going to be harder because we, we lock in the rates. From the past.
Well, uh, uh, we're just saying that all the rates are.
But we, we were locked in at a rate for years. Yeah.
Four, four years.
Yeah, you know what, Rob, that's a great point.
Yeah.
We are here to discuss, not for to protect, so I guess we should. Possible.
So are we leaving it at this?
You know, if, if it's because of the Friday thing, I have said, uh, uh, I, I have to say lately it's been better since they've gotten the regional managers. You know, able to respond.
Yeah.
They are very responsive. And so they, if they miss it on Friday, which often on those smaller streets, I found they do. Um, they will come Monday.
All right.
Um, so.
We just got to leave ourselves on flexibility because it's going to be.
It will.
Are we hearing?
Be with all of this. Yeah, okay.
Um. Uh, so can, can you, um. Reference the EAC memo that he did, you know, when, when putting together that our, there was some recommendations from the EAC. That maybe you could consider that a long objection. You have, I can set, reset it. That was from before you started.
Well, I, I did not see that, um, obviously, uh, I did take serious note of looking at the composter question. And it certainly is something that. I, I would think we would be interested in. The problem is we just don't have a site and they're going to expect us to have a site for them to, to look at that compo's.
Uh, they, they have the recommendation for manual justice, just signal that we would like, to have a signal before I get, that we would like. Even others, though, if they know these.
Uh, there's certainly no argument adding it as an alternative because you're not billed and couldn't commit to it, so. Like, I don't have decks of doing it. I just thought, um. It wasn't going to yield a lot for us because we didn't, you know, it's one thing if Laura Marion was accepting it at a transfer station. And they had a spot we could use, but they're not.
I don't believe it, but if we look into the EAC. Another, maybe group worthy, of all composting, for example, there is lots of composting on nineteen thirty, which we perhaps should come out of the movie, or even for Narberth residents. Outside of this guy.
Separate company.
Correct.
Yeah, I think the EAC may, I know they've been discussing that in a compiler, that, that could just be a separate.
Yeah, that's.
Well, you could. It's your.
Right, sort of.
Sounds correct.
Yeah, yeah, it's separate.
I've heard Township recently got a grant for composting companies. To, to ride on those collections. Again, they, they got a grant for that. So there, there's all, there's always. Separated make composters, but just so that you don't have to worry about. Uh, I, no, I, I'm not sure. I think it's anti-traffic, yeah, the traffic comp that probably uses a different business to. You have to make that come.
Well, I mean, and there's only a reference to going back and doing it in a separate R P for that. Right, maybe even creating a different, you know, building blocks for that.
That's, that's, uh.
Any other part you were reading? Sounds interesting. So I, I have to say, I looked at the public works suggestions, but I'm. You know, I, I get a lot of them are which day would be best, but, but I, they proposed cutting down on the, the leaf collection. I think it's going to be easier just to leave, uh, as is. Because telling people, you have a leaf collection stopping at this time, it's starting up again, it's just, it's difficult to. There's information for, but I don't know how much. I feel like the, the leaf collection is. Less expensive than everything else in the game, so.
Well, you're not getting the same tipping.
That, right. It's like this is just less material, it's water. But.
Well, we'll have to see the price, like.
Yeah, I want to, if you want to put, uh, well, we have that in, in there. My goal is to put together an RFP that reflected your existing services.
Right.
Um, and. So if you want to put, so should we put an alternate or maybe pickup only half of the year, or you pick up all of it for, uh?
I really use it. I mean, we use it.
I, I wasn't trying to put that suggestion. I'm asking you excitement, I'm asking you excitement for the council to support, so I think neither of us. Um. Okay. Barbara, did you have other concerns about, of yours?
Um. Ken, I sent you an email not too long before our meeting, because I didn't have a chance to read it, but just a, a couple of things in the scope of work of, that. Just maybe make it a little clearer. I'm sure you're building this off of a past. Document, and so you, you might just want to take a look at that and, um, and see about including. Those in there. I mean, I think it doesn't hurt to, like, in the list of recyclables, add in a phrase and anything else that. The recycling facility you're taking our stuff to will accept, you know, let us know, because, um, a number of years ago, we learned that Republic's. The site, the place Republic was taking our recyclables could now take septic packaging, you know, the stuff that. Uh, juice boxes and that kind of stuff. And, well, we don't have that listed in here, but. Uh, do we really have to have a comprehensive list? I, I'd like it to, you know, allow for the flexibility.
It's an issue. The haulers will be obligated to, to tell us what the collecting site will, will collect, and then we. In turn, will have to turn that around and educate the community as to what they can put in the recycling can.
Okay, then I, then I would ask, why are we itemizing all that in item A two under collection of refuse and recyclable materials? Why don't we just refer to? The collection of recyclable materials from all. Properties located in the borough of Narberth, period. I, I don't, I think when you start a list like that, people think that's the only thing they can do.
Oh.
It's just my observation, so, you know, ta, take it, uh, as you will, but.
I, I honestly didn't know why the list was in there, um. I, I don't think they're going to go to the extent of, uh, turning away collection because.
No, I don't mean, yeah, I don't mean that. I mean, just having anything like this out in the public, the public will read this and think, if anybody does, and I realize that's, you know. But there's a lot of confusion about what can go in your recycling can. And I guess I'm just saying, hey, the fewer places we list what those things are, the better. Because if we've got one master list of this is it, and I look at this and I go, this is not, this is not it, because actually they don't want metal jar lids anymore either, so.
The collection of recyclable materials from all properties located in the borough of Narberth, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania.
Period.
Generated.
Yeah.
By above described locations.
Yes.
Get the same according to the law.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was the last part of the last sentence.
Right, yeah.
That. That's fine.
Okay.
Um, maybe reference what, you know, what's accepted in the sorting facility.
Yeah, yeah, mm-hmm. So, yeah, and you can look at the other comment that I had in the email, but it was. Just kind of about this whole, what's, the definition of garbage seems very, um, limited. It's just talking about food waste, and I'm like, there's a lot of non-food. Household refuse that isn't referenced in here. So, again, uh, probably just old dra, you know, it's old drafting, so. Um, might as well clean it up if we can.
Okay, so the collection of recyclable materials from all properties located in the borough of Narberth, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, uh. Acceptable to the sorting facility, uh, they're delivered. Generated by the above described locations and if you were the market, then the same according to that. Yeah. Anyway.
Thank you.
It technically says you can take whatever the sorting says.
Right.
Uh, do we need to get some of that zoomed?
All right, and then I, I just wanted to say, so I think there was some confusion about this is going to be a three year or a four year contract. And then, you know, our current contract is four years. It does look like most of the places that you have in here, you've got it as three years. See, I should, I mean, I was assuming this was going to be another four years. So, I pointed.
What do you want to do?
It's up to you. Yeah, but I mean, I mean, I, I think offer. Yeah, when you do a longer term, they tend to be a little bit. Sometimes a little bit better about price.
That's, I'm, I'm keeping it four years, so, yeah, but you often change that. I, I can go through and change it to four years, and that can be the.
Actually, very great. Only because, um, we have been talking about a lot of changes for, um. I would say changes for waste transportation, and we don't want to be like, uh, for years. Not being able to. Change. four years, not being able to, uh, make any changes. So we, I'm just trying to call, I hear so hard I'm able to add.
Yeah, I'm just definitely a little bit, it's, it's better, it's a little bit. That's what we tried to change it, you say, if we made it more, do they also wanna say true?
Is there a way to add a catch ball into the contract? So we, we can't, we can't do that.
No, it seems complicated.
Okay.
Okay. It is complicated.
All right, sorry. Before making voices.
Are we, are we trying to amend this now?
Yeah, basically, we're, we're.
Ken's gonna. How would you decide?
Ken is gonna make the changes. He's gonna send it out. Cause this is so, you know, we, we, we need a new contract in place by January one.
Okay, um, well, I have.
Yeah.
Um, number seven, oh, in the, uh, on page seventeen. Uh, there's a repeat. Seven, I'm confused. And then number eight, I think it's next day, uh, all properties except for the number of properties that we have. One unit of waste run through, run to ninety six, um, kind of. It should be just one.
Right.
Actually, it should be, um, up to Maggie to get the salary for doing that.
Right, it's not another case. I mean, women who in their, I mean, wish they're, uh. Right. And I think part of that was uncertainty of whether or not we're gonna stick with the ninety six limit.
Okay.
Um, and that's the reason why I've written words like that. So, um, we, we could just specify the, the unit. Um, because I did add even the definition that they have an explanation where it's.
I think the, the one you know, the definition was different in the contract than it was before the case. I might wanna make that.
I probably copied this. But maybe I, I will know that.
Oh, yeah, it says one, two.
Yeah, it's a standard, yeah.
It just one or.
Or maybe six, seven, or four, one or more containers. It was not a six. That was more than that.
All right, so amending the definition to one unit of waste to match the orders. Um, I'm sorry, Dean, what is the form prior to that?
Number six and seven, on page seventeen, so.
Oh, six and seven on page seventeen.
It's number one of this.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and then sticking to three years or four? Four?
Four.
Four. Four years.
What are the current fines?
For, um, for who?
For the trash company.
That, that's not exactly fines, like we would take four or five years, five years, or if you don't, they don't, they, you know. See, that's what, what we had shown, oh, it's, it's like a hundred dollars a year, you know, a year, a year, a hundred year, fifty dollars a year.
Does, does that need to be articulated, um, in this RFP?
There would need to be, there would need to be part of the contract if you bring potatoes behind that, get a hold of that line from that. Um. Do we, do we have this such a, uh, it's.
I don't start to, there's a little bit of dialogue. So we have, did you say find them through the contract or will we find them through our own complete contract?
Uh, I think we can just use the same. Buyers of the current record, but it's incredibly, it's, it's, that goes in.
I can locate that and put that in here as well.
I reckon we may read it in company language, but since we're fairly, like, I might be able to track down. Or, or at least draft version. I, I, I'm sure I don't know the final version, but I'm sure I have heard it.
Okay, we're there. We will put that in there for you.
One other thing, um, I'm just wondering if you knew that that came once we go, I don't think so. And I'll check at all of the, um, public works to, um, someone can get up and save the rest of money. I love it. I like the down. Quite much back for five.
For, kind of, all guys pick up in our facility. Probably. Probably individual. Properties.
As a, as a practical matter, when you have a bulk item, like a heavy refrigerator, do we want our guys, you know, wrenching their backs coming out of, and then, uh, wrenching their backs getting out the refrigerator? And then we're on workers, the workers come. Um. You know, there's something to think about.
Yeah, I, I'd say that's a very good point there. I, I wasn't thinking about that, but that is a concern. Yeah. Um, no, I, I think just let me put the, to it, I think. Yeah, I mean, it seems to, until we, we have the equipment to do it, there's no, no reason for us ever to, because we don't have a motor. Or any, anything that the compost can, if they're heavy, they're put out, like, not bad, they're only done and carrying them. And that's where the injuries are like that.
Okay, so, one more.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So, and I, I said, I said that EAC never over, but one thing I'll just highlight, they recommended that, uh, we asked for the information on where the trash is going. So we want to, so the council wants to stay in position because they.
We've already known that.
I mean, to, to know, but specifically, you know, what landfill is a, they captured landfill or not? Uh, is it an incinerator? You know, all of this type of, we wanna be able to.
That's a, that's a question for Laura Marion. If, we, we, we have our reference all there and then he can just all to the facility. So I don't know, but it's something we can find out. That's not a secret.
Cause when we, we did several years ago, we did a lot of research on where our recycling is going. And comparing it to, um, uh, different facilities and what.
I believe in here, it, it talks about the, uh, Laura Marion substation, uh, being, uh, for, who actually did get brought in, so. I, I can check with Laura Marion and see who they have, um, contracted to, to, uh, take the ways. We end up paying them, uh, they negotiated. And for the borough, I think it's very, you know, we only get a four share and they've got major negotiating bar, we've got a lot of stuff, uh, to get rid of, so. Yeah, I can check with them and find out, um.
So the recycling is also going through the substation?
Yeah, I, I think it's being temporarily brought there and it's, it's a mobile contract, so. So you didn't deserve it, but we can double check that too. We should talk out the contract. Um, I don't see the reason why we can't ask questions, yeah, about.
Okay, so Ken, why you, uh, create out to us, like, your, your marching orders, your, your, what, what do you expect?
It comes with a fixing, that the one unit definition, amending to indicate receiving a four-year contract. Uh, fixing redundancy in six and seven on page seventeen. Um. John and I will be, uh, putting together language to clarify a fine process. Uh. Obviously something.
Number eight, uh, uh, one to two ninety six.
I think that's what I'm saying.
Well, I did say that. I had to, I had to fix that, uh, the quantity, unit quantity.
So what we're, what we're landing on right now, these are, these are just the technical changes. What we're landing on right now is our RFP for essentially the same service that we have that. Right, one, you know. One day we feature, uh, these ways of garbage recyclables. And the actual days of this pickup to be flexible, looking to the level. So. We could end up with the same service we have. It's almost, it's gonna be more expensive because the price of trash almost got higher, but we're not, we're not currently proposing any major changes. The only thing is that the junk week is gonna be listed separately. So if we wanted to, you could look at that. But we're comfortable with this, with changes that, uh, Ken has laid out. Cause once we approve this, it's gonna go out, right? You're gonna fix it. You're gonna make these changes. Yeah. I just wanna make sure everybody's okay with this. All right, see you later, guys. Jane?
No, I don't, I mean, I haven't seen another trash contract. I just wonder if there needs to be a little bit of some, of me, but.
No, there, there really doesn't. I mean, we have, uh, somewhere out there in some pages, it's pretty typical of the land. Our key focuses are maintaining identification, maintaining, um, you know, uh, the accountability and identifying stolen work. The additional details that we may find are necessary can be elaborated in the file back. We don't need it now. I just, you know, unless it's gonna somehow be something materially different that will add cost. Uh, then it doesn't need to be made.
All right, John, you, so you're gonna look at this one. Okay, so it's getting, it's getting elaborated, I think. Sure, it is still elaborated. Okay, um, that's both on, uh, proving the RFP version of the decision. All those in favor of proving the RFP? Ken, it's, yeah. One more. That would be on with both, um. Part of your force, man. Maybe I missed this change here.
Um, yes, it's on.
Well.
It's on.
It's a new request.
It's a new request.
It's discussed.
Yeah, so it's on the, it's on the, um, and then, okay, I moved to approve the higher part of our.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's a discussion. So, okay. Hope don't get hurt by the part of this.
Well, there are a couple of reasons, um. We, we do find it now, um, that we are missing coverage areas, coverage times which people are lobbying in place, uh, about parking. Uh, that includes, you know, times which, you know, fall's not here, or, uh, not scheduled to work. And we could fill a lot of, uh, the key vacant slots, uh, with a part-time person. Uh, the other reason is, is it's helpful for us maintaining, uh, a few staff in the building and, 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 um. Steve, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add.
In addition to maintaining, uh, proper staffing levels, if the fall is not here, this will also give us the ability to supplement staffing for events. Uh, falls would be very, uh, flexible with existing events, like, portal July, uh, playing on the Dickens Festival, uh, the music fest, things like that. So having that additional person to be called on for those events to allow us, you know, to either ship please off to somewhere else or not rely on hiring or what have you.
Uh, additionally, um, typically fall works Monday through Fridays. We don't, even though the hours are supposed to be enforced on Saturdays, unless it's, it's not typically enforced, um, and so, and there are people who take advantage of it. And they're downtown and elsewhere in the town. Um, so, so it will be helpful to have some to actually enforce on Saturdays.
Is this, uh, I forget if this is still on the budget for this year? It is. I was able to confirm that it had been placed in the budgets, um, and there was discussion of it, I recall. It had been brought up, I think in March, just before September had left, but then I don't, I don't think it actually made the council. Um, I have confirmed the funds are there, uh, and it, it has been budgeted for. Well, back, we have our extra budget because we're, we're not hiring for the entirety of the year that we get this paid. So there's still much to go.
And there's presumably revenue that comes in with additional enforcement.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I mean, every ticket, God tends to be, uh, revenue for the most part, so. Oh, yeah, uh, I mean, every ticket, God tends to be, uh, revenue, for the most part, so.
Well, this is, I'm tempted to wave, but.
Right.
We're probably in question clients of the.
Well, it's, it's the manager issues, it's the manager.
To assist with the flow of vehicles through downtown, actually, we aren't taking our valuable parking spaces for the people ourselves. Okay, and we have in the past had a part-time, um, part control, didn't work out for various reasons, but the logic is set, uh, the whole proposal position.
Uh, in the agenda, I know it just says approval of the, uh, position, but I believe there was also, uh, proposed amendment in the job description as well. Uh, the staff would have, if you consider. Chief and I reviewed the, the job description, felt like there are some changes that could be done there across, you can uh, at least in your time, listening to potential candidates, uh, would otherwise be qualified, but some factors that were listed in there, we didn't get, where it's necessary, be able to carry out. Certainly, it seems all the options there, uh.
On the old one, it said that, uh, qualification, substantial knowledge of parking management administration, and electronic digital handheld parking systems, and knowledge of principles, practices, procedures used in the government coordination administration of the parking management industry, and all aspects of daily parking enforcement operations. Seems like that was a pretty high bar to now concede.
Someone's not already.
Someone's very interesting, right, if they, yeah.
Okay, that would be immediately disqualified potentially.
Yeah, I find it hard to believe that, that, that Austin was in his job had that.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, there was also, uh, a higher education preference that we didn't feel was necessary, no position.
Fair enough, yeah, I'm very.
I hope Paul and Trey will see first one, or we'll be pulling up for part.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Uh, I did wanna suggest, uh, that, for, list that you note that irregular weekend hours would be expected, those are.
Yeah, we could include somebody can, on Saturday.
Yes, from a, yeah.
It'll be, no, fine.
Exactly.
Any other, uh, comments or concerns about this?
Uh, does the motion include both the job amendments and, uh?
Well, the motion just says approval to hire, uh, we can.
Do we need to do that?
Yeah, we don't need to approve the list of, the, the job descriptions, do need to be approved, right? Okay, we can, we can, we can approve, uh, I will, I will, someone like to amend the motion.
Yeah.
We amend the motion to include an approval of the job description. Someone like to make a motion to.
Some move.
Alright, so we, we are moving to amend this motion.
Thank you.
To include, uh, approval of the job descriptions are second.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion of the motion to amend this?
With the addition of possible hours.
Okay, so we are just voting to amend the motion, and I'm voting on the overall.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just the amendment, alright, all those in favor of amending the motion? Okay, motion is now amended, so discuss the motion.
Approval of certainly be notified, in the job notice, or at least the hours of expected work, so that.
Alright.
Yeah, cause we definitely don't really have the trouble of interviewing somebody to find out, they're not in the work for shit, I mean, it's cool.
So, okay. Further discussion, alright, let us vote to approve the hire of a park side parking enforcement officer, and approve the job description, uh, as specified in the packet, uh. Alright, that's the motion, all those fair, proposed, yeah. Alright, uh, information items, we have, uh, monthly reports, clear files, and, uh, at this time, we're only missing, let's see, ambulance, um, maybe it's maybe evidence. Yeah, so. Let's see, uh, apparently here are local reports as well, uh, new business. Old business, uh, committee reports, that starts off, uh.
Yeah, looking for.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, I'll be greeted to F and A's net, these are, these are the proposed budget calendar. Uh, we can expect on October fifth, a preliminary budget proposal workshop, um, after comment on ten nineteen, um, we can put the follow-up workshop with an eleven to presentation, for consideration of twelve twenty-one and five hundred triple. Uh, F and A requests that we reach out to groups and committees, as we have in the past, as for budget requests, fire, library, change, etcetera, uh, and we have asked, uh, Ken to do a grand calendar, um, that's the beginning. We're making the present budget, uh, we discussed moving, we just, uh, we discussed, um, transitioning from QuickBooks to new software, uh, to be determined.
Like the next year?
At DeCarleius, that they asked for.
Okay, and you're gonna reach out on the budget, kidding, uh, library?
I've already spoke to the, the park company and library, okay. But I haven't talked to other community years. Or, yet.
Certainly the park and library, why share our?
Well, I, I immediately approached them because they have departments in our, uh, so, uh, I treated them as if they were part of the operation.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh. Yeah, so Public Health and Safety met on September eighth. And we discussed always where anything land, that would also be in there. And, um, we are, we received a recommendation from P A C, the Police Department. On emergency communication plan, which we'll be reviewing at our next, in October. And, um, and so we've kind of recently cleared a lot off of our agenda, so we're kind of now at a position where we can you know, we can, we can work on whatever the staff wants, you know, at this point, but we're, yeah, knowing that, pressing.
That's, very. Well, you know, correct, and, uh, Barbara, I know you don't have an actual parking committee updated, but, wanna talk about the status of the ordinance?
Sure, um, so, um, with, um, John Walco's assistance, um, we've got a draft ordinance and resolution that's being reviewed by staff. Um, we hope to have, um, all of the feedback by Monday, so that we can then make whatever changes are necessary in time to have something that could be included in the October fifth, uh, workshop packet, and at that point, um, I would make a presentation of the, uh, drafts, but, um, with, just as a kind of an information item thing, so that, um, everyone on council, as well as everyone in the public, has a, a, a good amount of time to review and understand um, what's contained in those, and so, um, you know, we could, depending on what council then wanted to do, we could vote at the October business meeting to advertise, we could vote at the November workshop meeting to advertise it, you know, we can just, uh, you know, we'll see where we are, um, after everyone has taken, has had a chance to look at it, but, um, these, uh, the ordinance and resolution drafts are reflecting all of the, um, decisions that council has made over the last year or so. So it's, it's not anything new from, um, what we've seen before, but I know it's been a long time since we've looked at it, so I'm gonna give a little background uh, information again, just to get us all back on the same page, and, um, so, that's, that's to come.
Alright, so I think, uh, our October fifth workshop meeting is pretty involved with the budget presentation. Uh, uh, importance, uh. Uh, that should be, uh, be more than usual, uh, anyway, uh. Comments for the other council?
Uh, I'd, I'd, I mean. Sure.
Great.
Um, well, well, parts of recreation will be, um, you know, September, with the master park's plan, we need a recycler fee on, team, um. And just to answer, uh, like, well, commuting schedule is accessible on our website, um, it's, it's, uh, actually, I don't know, I think it's like a Wednesday at each one, um, but on the.
Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to know, there was a discussion about task force and issues for holding partners, so, um, and it's included in the scope of the law of management plan, um, and the original grant contract, uh, so there were questions that allow the professor how to integrate that into the master park plan, um, and how they might work together, the committee, um, what, what holds, uh, the existing stations where the committee might have, and they were looking for, it's a direction on, on, um.
I don't think you need that now.
Okay, yeah, I'm not asking.
Right, it will be something to think about, you know.
I would say they should, they should focus their attention, else, or, inside the, we'll, we'll give a guidance step on it.
And we should note, um, that we're gonna follow up with some other comments, talk about what is so with that, um, for our, our meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss it in the discussion.
Yeah. And, and have that, yeah, yeah, we just, uh, we, you know, that's, that's a good, um, moving. And, I, I don't have, I don't understand.
So the scope of work will allow us, uh, R and P to get a partner to, to produce the actual plan. Which they, uh, well, then. Okay. Thank you.
I could say we've been interviewing this week for the two positions for the office, got some pretty good candidates, uh, achieved myself, and Jeff Almond, our homeowners director, will be finishing that up here Friday, and we'll, we'll be picking some, some way next week.
Is that for both positions?
Or, yeah.
Alright, so you're gonna have people in next week?
No, we're hoping to have the interview done this week and decide next.
Or tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I don't know, but I just wanted to tell you.
Okay, great, so we'll have, we'll probably have somebody in force on, uh, okay, our workshop meeting. Maybe, maybe, that kind of business we can do for workshop, okay. Good.
I don't know, we're not at that.
Give a, sure.
Um, so as a transportation, there are many that, uh, that are, um, so all of that meeting definition, that is, was on the website, um, either to, uh, information, or projects, or the other transportation, um. But also have information about the.
This is in collaboration with Laura Marion, through a grant that they got, so, so, that's, uh.
Right, we're, um, coordinating one, F and D E C, which is all the, uh, any permission, and from your township, it's, uh, not about that, 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 that.
Right. Alright, any more comments for the good council? Uh, okay, we will have an executive session after this meeting to discuss a legal matter regarding charges, disposition of borough property, and to the cover for, police contract negotiations, and a performance evaluation for the borough manager. Anything else come up that we are, plus on? That helps. Uh, any other topics to do? Okay, uh, so, uh, we will not be returning to session after, uh, the executive session, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So would.
Yes, there's a second. And then, uh, discussion, alright, all those in favor of adjourned? Okay, uh, so we're adjourned, and take, uh, three minutes here, final break.
Oh, punch.
Okay, which was exactly.
So, good night, thank you very much.